County Commission in here, kind of Missouri, Thursday, January 30th. The ninth day of the term, all present except Jake. At nine o'clock, Commissioner Stone left the door. The agenda was approved as presented. The minutes for the Monday, January 27th, 2025, may or red. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Stone's second motion, motion carried. The minutes from the Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, may or red. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Stone's second motion, motion carried. Expenditures from the following were proved to pay. Sheriff, Sheriff of County Government, Sheriff's Civil Fund, Employee Benefits, Juvenile Office, Hillings Grounds, and Inmate Security. At nine twenty, the commission met with Mike Edgett, as he is representing residents from Stonebridge subdivision, Justoff Urick, and Booth Rhodes in Clinton. Also in attendance were numerous residents of the subdivision. Mike shared that the sewer system at the subdivision has failed and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources is requiring a new system to be installed. The city of Clinton has agreed to connect the residents in the city sewer system already in the area. The cost of the connection will be covered by a grant that the city of Clinton is able to receive. The requirement of the grant stipulates that the recipient of the grant must be a political subdivision of the state. Mike shared that his research has determined that the county commission must petition on behalf of the residents to organize a common sewer district. Mike provided a completed petition containing the statutes regulating the petition process to establish the district, the legal description of the tracts of land of the district, the name of the common sewer district to be Stonebridge Sewer District, as well as the fact that no issuance of bonds would be necessary to finance the construction of the sewer. Mike shared that the petition is submitted to the circuit court to order an election to be conducted by the election authority to be voted on by the residents of the district. He stated that he is confident that the residents would overwhelmingly support the establishment of the sewer district. Mike concluded by stating there would not be any financial responsibility from the county. He would draw up a contract outlining the terms, including the cost to be paid by the residents. After Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve of the petition to establish the Stonebridge Sewer District, Commissioner Stone's second motion, motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, absent yes. At nine thirty-five, Chuck Caseley and Jared Morrison from Evergy met with the commission. The group discussed testing companies that are able to complete the test. Chuck stated that he agrees that more testing needs to be done. Chuck stated a third-party testing company needs to be decided by the county. It was recommended that the test be paid for by the county, then reimbursed by Evergy in order to be totally transparent. He also shared that Evergy would like the testing done as soon as possible. He also stated that the county needs to have the results analyzed for a better understanding of the numbers. Evergy requests that they be present at the time of testing to be able to test the same location at the same time for redundancy purposes. All agree that transparency is extremely important in this situation. Evergy stated that they will not interfere with the company's testing, they will pay for it, and they just want to be present at the time of testing so they are able to duplicate the samples at the same time. All agree. Commissioner Larson stated that he had a list of three companies that are able to do the testing. At nine fifty, Sheriff Aaron Brown and Captain Michael Bilbrick met with the commission to present the 2025 through 2027 Corps of Engineer contract. The sheriff stated that the 25 contract is for $50,007.12, the 26 contract for $53,248, and the 27 contract for $55,919. After discussion, Commissioner Larson made a motion to accept the Corps of Engineer Patrol contract as stated. Commissioner Stone's second motion, the motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, absent yes. Sheriff Brown also led discussion on the county's deputy supplemental salary grant. He shared that deputies must be named in the initial contract as a part of the regulations of the grant. Issues with the grant occur after a resigning deputy is replaced and a new deputy would not qualify for the grant. The sheriff currently has five deputies that are not qualified for the grant because of this regulation. He requested that the commission allow these deputies to receive an equal amount without the grant. The current grant ends 6/30/25. He believes the changes can be made prior to the next grant cycle that will eliminate this situation. After review, Clerk Rick stated he did not believe that paying the five deputies would be detriment to the sheriff's budget. The group also discussed back pay of the deputy supplement would be done on the next payroll, as information of an increase was not shared with the clerk's office. Dennis Power from Bridge Supervisor shared that the easement on both Northwest 14 on One Road and Northwest 750 Road is forty foot. He does not know what the road width is. He stated that most of the debris on the property is off of Northwest 750 Road. Dennis stated that the bridge sweeping was done on one bridge in Fields Creek Township, two in Davis, two in Leesville, one Tigo, and two in Ostate Township. The south part of the county's bridges will be inspected in March. Dennis stated that he will be billing the township for the sweeping off of the bridges. He also stated that the road sign replacements are complete and will be billing out about nineteen townships or special road districts for that work. Commissioner Larson suggested the county host training on how to blade a road, as he is getting numerous calls in regards to the shape of the county roads. Dennis stated that MoDOT used to host a type of training, but no longer does. He also stated that he does, did think it would be well attended if it were a voluntary training where no attendance, if it were made mandatory. Dennis stated that he would like to begin to charge entities for equipment use in lieu of operator hours, as his biggest cost is for the equipment. He also shared that Fields Creek Township has paid all of its outstanding invoices except for the work done on Booth Road. The county does not believe, or the township, sorry, the township does not believe the road is their responsibility. Dennis recommended that the county withhold cart funds equal to the amount owed. The group agreed. Terry and Suzanne Smith met with the commission for a recommendation on what testing company they should contract with as they input a parcel of land for sale in the Urick area. Mark suggested that they visit with the attorneys, including Evergy, as they may be able to test for free. The commission shared the names of the companies that they may solicit services from. Charlie Kidmore met with the commission to discuss the opening of portions of Division Road in Davis Township. He shared his concern of a neighbor that may be hauling heavy loads, I shouldn't say may, may be hauling heavy loads of logs down the road over culverts. Charlie is concerned the culverts may collapse and be responsible for replacement, as the county states the road is on public road. Charlie shared that the county installed those culverts in the past as it was classified as an open road. Commissioner Larson shared that South District Commissioner Bradley should be consulted as he knows he is doing research on the road. The sister's quarterly reimbursement document was reviewed and approved. The commission noted that they had met together with Congressman Mark Alford, some of his staff, Emergency Management Director Mark Harden, and a reporter from NBC Channel 41 of Kansas City at the fly ash site in Davis Township on Monday, January 27th at 3:30. Mark Harden shared that the IP has been set up in the basement of the courthouse. The emergency management office plans to move in next week. A return call was made to David Johnson. David shared his background in working in the carpenters union and experience he had working in power plants. He shared of numerous contaminants that coal-fired power plants emitted to the air, soil, and water. He shared that both the carpenters union and the boilers union sued a power plant and nothing became of it. He stated that there are so many pollutants that terminate you at the Montrose Power Plant. He mentioned that the Lucine Power Plant has the same pollutants as well as any lake connected to a power plant. He stated that fly ash is used in so many products as the government allows. He stated that he has been exposed to excessive amounts of radiation by working in power plants for many years. David shared that there are numerous workers that suffer male illness, tumors, and various cancers due to exposure to toxins and radiation in power plants. He said that he was a good employee, supervised many contracts, and got the work done by the contract. He recommended the county get the testing done, specifically Deepwater Creek, as well as sample bottoms from Montrose Lake. At 11:21, the Commissioner Larson made a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Stone's second motion carried.
He has pretty darn near.
You could go to the library and read the kids' books.
We call it him out. Did I hear anything?
I'll make a motion.
Most been made. And I'll say to accept the minutes, near perfect minutes. As stated, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carried. Very good job.
Rick, don't you know the saying, good enough isn't...
It's close.
Okay. Here we go. Bills.
Martin, that must be on that sheet where you fell out. You put that down.
When we pay Rapid Financial, that's the company that we are using to pay jury pay. And we do it by direct deposit.
Need to answer yes. Somebody brought breakfast this morning. It's breakfast in bed.
I wish I was still here.
Good boy.
Morning.
Thank you, Scott.
I thought Ricky was supposed to get you coffee.
He's got coffee, but I'm not drinking coffee as much anymore, so he didn't want to make up a coffee.
Oh, my goodness. He didn't. I did, I did, he did.
Something.
Bruce, you should start your 45 minutes now.
I've got a few minutes in there.
No Snickers in there.
I told him I got donuts since he didn't bring Snickers.
Oh, he has holes. They don't count anything. Nothing.
The donut hole for the diet, right?
Absolutely.
The little fat folks here. I had to look at my stuff. Because you're cold.
I'm cold.
Let's get this up there. That one. I'm just correcting page and I'll leave them. Doesn't have a look to eat. It's raining tomorrow.
Right.
Not raining, so.
Nope, all rain. So I was gonna say about two counties to the north.
Keep it going.
Well, that temperature dropped last night. The temperature sure dropped yesterday. I was at Walmart yesterday afternoon. There was a little line of clouds that moved through, wind shifted, temperature dropped about ten degrees right then, and this has been kind of downhill since.
I watched that Viking when that happened.
Not the wind, you could do a little something with it, too, that slow that.
Well, it was nice biking with the wind, I'll take it out.
I guess it sucks.
Have you started recording already? You're racing. We eat the donut if my wife sees it.
I don't know, bud. It's gonna be tough. I haven't had the thumbnail.
That's all right, I got a picture.
I already sent it to her. I really want to go get another one.
I gotta come in and just hit the whole hole.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Blur your face.
We'll do that for you.
I got it, don't worry.
Come on, go to the other side.
Yep. Do that notch.
Why don't I have three different numbers for you?
This is all my phone number. My fire station phone number, my office phone number. You want my fourth number?
No, no, no. I don't even want the first three. That's right, you sent me that card, right?
Yep.
That cash card or whatever, you should give it.
The previous buddy.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hey. You really gotta watch your dog, right?
I know.
She's beginning to drive unmarked.
She just got her car yesterday.
I'm trying to teach her well. What not to do.
Oh, Mr. Jake's still out.
Got more. That's it, that's it.
If you wanna go on, I can get up.
All right, Scott. We're ready.
I just didn't know if I had any questions.
I haven't even talked to him.
Are you ready?
Thank you for getting free.
At some point last year, we had an opinion from Mr. Browning, an attorney out of Jeff City, on an issue, tax issue, whether they were... He gave us the opinion, and we did get an appeal. This is just to engage him to handle it for us. And just so, because you're probably not aware, this is a taxpayer in Leesville Township, and they do not believe that they owe taxes on their property. And over the course of two years, it's about eighty-something thousand dollars. So they think they're exempt, and we, as a matter of law and using this attorney out of Jeff City who only handles property, says they are not exempt. They're just like everybody else. So this is just an engagement, because I can't engage him, even though it's pretty much in my budget. I mean, we do have a line item in my budget for attorneys' fees, but this is... It may go higher. I've already talked with Leesville, and they're really big help since Leesville's school, because they are... They're the, they're the major...
Major, yeah.
...in the fishery.
Yep.
Why do they think they don't owe taxes?
Because it is core land. They lease the core land, and the core is exempt. The core is exempt, but the improvements on the land are not exempt. So, I mean, we're trying to treat them like everybody else. They don't think so, and we think so. And it really does have some problems, some ramifications statewide, because there's lots of places that lease core land that make a profit off of it and use it as a business opportunity.
Right, right.
And they owe like everybody else.
Yeah, they're making money off of it, then.
That's my position, and that's just the attorney that was recommended by, from Camden County, and we've had some track record with him, and he's aware of the situation. And I don't know if you've ever heard of him, but...
I have, I have.
They never set a date on that, keep that hearing?
Not even, I'm just getting my ducks in a row way early. No, there's no date, there's no nothing.
So we had a P R O last year.
I think the initial hearings and stuff were all...
Just going on for mayor, just attorneys.
Really, it wasn't as much as, I mean, what before it was not, really, I mean, it's a lot, but it's not...
Question, because I know that all this legal stuff, some things you can, some things you can't. Can you get attorney fee, like if you win the case, you can't get attorney fees for this. Okay, that's what I thought.
Because this is really, this is a future state tax commission, not an actual court action. Could be different, not go into circuit.
Circuit, okay, okay.
But really, the state does give pretty wide deference to the counties on issues. I mean, like I said, this has, we're talking Stockton, Palmaterre, many places on Truman, like the Ozarks, even though that's Amber, there's several of them, or Lakes and others in the front of the state, this is all on point. And as you can tell, I mean, and I can bring you up the sheets, I didn't even think about bringing them, the tax they put into them is pretty big. They keep on doing stuff to it, they add campsites, they're doing all this, so we need to adjust it. But the county, it's very negligible. We're just the county, we're just the road board, or just the whatever, whatever, whatever. It's really not that much, but for the school district, it is a lot, because they're seventy-seven percent taxes, I think. And that's where all that money goes.
Not more.
And that's...
Huh?
Yeah, not more there. And you know, that's a, that's a, that's a teacher, you know, for a pretty small district. And...
We need to open up a school.
Huh?
Yeah, I'm gonna pay the motion.
No, we don't.
Yeah, contract, signing around.
I'll make a motion.
Most remain, I'll second it. Most remain, second, they're going contract with Signee Brown for the case. Forceful call.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And even though it's already done, just for your information, again, this is not even come up for an appeal date, this is not, but we just want him to handle, discover all that stuff for us. This does not happen very often, about once every three or four years do we have to engage an attorney. It's not that big a deal, but there's a lot of things to jump through, and there's a lot of deadlines, and they have case management system, and you know, you hate for a default judgment to come, because we're pretty limited on our staff on what can get done.
Miss the file and you're something, yeah.
I don't like default judgments, unless they're in my face.
Yeah, I can do.
Give me a copy of six news.
There's two that are already built, they're building...
Four more.
Four, but then over on the other side, they got a bunch.
For that?
I guess D and Crop. Chickens.
This is right over there somewhere.
Osage?
Osage.
Oh, I hit another one. Isn't that Osage?
Browington.
Down in Browning?
Yeah.
South of Browning.
South of Browington. Right up against the county line, Sinclair County line, let's say 1100.
But he was in the SRA, I mean, they're... I mean, luckily, they're not chicken, it's an egg deal, not a chicken. I mean, there is a difference, actually, and a huge difference. But they're, both of those families, just, they're always in here, they're always in here ahead of time, they're always letting us know what they're doing, they're always...
Yeah.
They give us the actual, I mean, the real numbers, not the... I mean, I wish everybody was like that.
They make a lot of money on eggs.
Is that gonna be chicken or eggs on double O?
Eggs.
Eggs. We have four from an N O double O.
If it's them, that's all they do, heartland.
Where on double O? Is that...
Right around the, is that your son-in-law's house?
No, it's my son.
Sons, yeah, all through that, there's gonna be four of them.
How much acreage have they got?
They have one done already.
There was one sitting there, but I know there's a question as far as the zoning there, how many they can put on the land.
Well, they're close, they're probably within where I am.
Is it all one?
Just multiple parcels.
See, it's gotta be, the way that, I think the way that zoning reads, it has to be, you can't own like fifty here and a hundred here, and ten here and call it a hundred and sixty acres. It has to all be connected. So there's gonna be, I just, there's gonna be an issue, I can tell you, with Windsor Special, or not Windsor Special, but Windsor, because that's Windsor's, and their zoning does not allow that. You can put twenty thousand, I think it's twenty, I'd have to read it again. I've read so much stuff, I can't remember half of it. But I think it reads that you can put twenty thousand chickens in a barn or whatever, but you have to have a hundred and sixty acres to do it. That's why they, they built that one and they stopped, and I didn't know that they had started again, so... I know that was taught.
I haven't seen, I haven't...
Yeah, yeah, but I'm...
I haven't seen if they started. I know they moved a house.
Because I think they bought, the brown house, there's a big brown house. It's to the right of that, the road that goes back in there, I think, I thought they were building one back there, I heard, but I'm not even sure how much land's there.
Well, they bought the huge house with the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
They bought all that property.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I painted that house years and years ago, but I don't even know how much land is there.
And I don't either, but I do know that if they're titled the same, exactly the same, then they all become one parcel.
So they can, you can, then you can own land in one spot and be a mile away?
No, 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 contiguous.
Okay, see, and that's the issue, they're not.
Okay, no, no, I thought you meant if you buy your neighbor out...
No, 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 I get that, but they have to connect.
Sure.
Is my, yeah, okay. So that's gonna come up, I know.
See where he goes. I don't know.
What else I could sneak over there and get some eggs? I'm good. Nine dollars a dozen at Walmart.
Is that how much they are?
What?
Nine seventy-six.
Seriously?
That's what they were yesterday.
Nine?
Nine seventy-six.
Wow.
I thought they had three... No wonder they can spend that much money on land, no? At nine dollars a dozen.
No kidding.
Paying the money you're making.
Somebody was in yesterday that has some of those barns and, uh, and they said, doesn't look, they're, they're, what they get is completely the same. Whether the, no matter what the price is high or low, he goes.
Well, it's the middle man that makes the money.
Or he goes, I'm not even sure about that. Somebody's making it though.
Yeah.
But they're not. I mean, he goes, uh, he goes, I'm not complaining because they, when the, when the prices are really low, they're giving us a premium. And when the prices are high, you know, it's, it all works out. He said, we're happy with what we get and all, it's a good kind of vibe.
Let, let me, let me, since you brought it up, let me ask you something. Cause I'm try, I am trying to figure out. I know the one down there in Springfield. Remember the guy that came in and, and was wondered about because he was worried about where they would turn on to, what is it?
Yes, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? Yeah, yeah. I can't.
Roseland Road.
That's it, that's it. There's a chicken farm up the road there, Scott. It's owned by the Mennonites, or the Mennonites run it. But it actually is a corporation. Cause they've got their sign at the top of it. Publicly, publicly traded corporation. How is that zoned? Is that zoned agriculture or is that zoned commercial?
It's, it's, I don't do any of the zoning. What is it, what is it listed for?
Meanwhile, how's it assessed?
Well, how, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry. How's it assessed?
What is the use? Is it agriculture?
Chickens.
It's chicken, then it's agriculture.
So, so, so a corporation comes in.
If they're predominantly that, yes. Just like, uh, a lumber mill, it's predominantly lumber that's, that's still ag. Now.
That seems like. See, that seems like though you're, I mean, cause they're zoned. If, if you assess something that is commercial or industrial, there's a higher assessment, right? The money's higher that you're gonna get.
I, I agree with.
That's the last page. Well, no, but you didn't, you didn't answer my question now.
Let me go, let me go and get the, I'll, I'll get you the exact verbiage.
Because that just seems like that's not right. I mean, a, a, a corporation, a huge major corporation can come in here, set up a business that's agricultural and get.
Is the corporation, is the corporation the one that owns the land? Or is the corporation the one that owns the building? Or is the corporation the one that owns the chickens?
That one I don't know. But I mean, how, why, what? So if they didn't own the land, but they own the chickens, you're gonna assess the chickens, right?
I can still assess, I still assess the chickens.
Do you assess it though, as a corporation?
You can, you can only assess them as.
That's wrong. Any way you cut it, I, I, I get it, I get it, but that's wrong.
Same thing with land. It doesn't matter what you're using, if it, land is at a certain price period, doesn't matter how you use it.
That's, that right there is one of the big reasons why your small farms are going out of business. And you've got people upset about it. Because the, look at the difference. If, if, it, it's like I've got a million dollars to run my business and you got a thousand dollars. Which one of us do you think's gonna make the most money?
Well, true. But, but you also have to look at.
It's picking favorites. That's what it is. Any way you cut it, that's picking favorites.
You go out and you pay six thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars an acre and I bet it on the books for five hundred an acre. Who's picking favorites?
Well, why would it be for five hundred dollars an acre?
Because that's what the state says I have to do.
Well, then the issue is at the state. Some, some, hey, I, don't get me wrong. I've, I've, I've said it from day one. I, the, the whole damn thing needs to be started over.
The state is not our friend.
No. I'm gonna get you a.
You're gonna figure that out.
Average.
Average is right. You're always wrong.
I guess, cause look, I mean, it's quite obvious. There's a lot of this government stuff I know nothing about. I'll be the first minute and if somebody doesn't like it, too bad. I'm sorry. That's, that's the way it is. But in saying that, that just seems like, you know, like, like your state reps and all these, how come somebody's not going after them and saying, hey, while you're up there kinda sitting back with feet propped up, how about doing something for the, our actual people?
Well, if, if you're talking to the legislators, they think they are doing it for the average people out here, which is the agricultural community.
No, what they're doing it for is the guys that's going, hey, I wanna get elected. Can you, can you float me some cash to run my thing? That's who they're doing it for. They're doing it for the big, the big corporations that's funding their pot. I'm gonna make a lot of people mad. I'm just saying, but I don't care. This is so wrong in so many ways. And ninety percent of the people out here have no idea. That it's going on. And if they did, you know, man, I, I'd be wanting to head to the trucks because it'd be pitchforks and knives coming up here. I mean, seriously, this, this, this is wrong in so many ways. It's not even funny.
Well, and we're not even, we're not even, I mean, we are bad. When you get up more towards the river and this land is sold for ten and twelve thousand an acre and they still have it on for five or six hundred dollars an acre.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's helping the family farmers keep their tax burden low, which I completely understand.
Right, right. Hey, I'm all for the, the small farms. That, that's what made this country great. It's just that, that the people with the money have figured out a way to work the system and play the game to where, you know what? We're gonna slide in the back door with the small farmer here and nobody's gonna know. Cause if you, I mean, literally, if you, if you told, if you'd hold half the people out here, what you just said, they would be livid over that. These small farmers, and rightfully so.
Well, wait, the small farmers are happy with what I said.
Well, yeah, not when they can.
If I, if I tried to put farmers, our agricultural community on it value, to add land value?
But the value wouldn't be, but what would, no, what you're not taking into account, the land value wouldn't be that high. Because the reason it's that high is because the people with money are bucking it up. It's the same reason the Mennonites are out here buying this land for eight thousand dollars an acre, when it ain't worth that. Two thousand, twenty-five hundred maybe. But if I walk in and I've got money and I've got people backing me and I go in and I say, hey, I wanna, I wanna buy your land for eight thousand and your land for eight thousand. What's that do to these guys? That raises their land.
Absolutely.
That's, that's a false sense. That's not what it truly is.
But we, but we, but we've seen that, we've seen that value going up even before the Mennonites came in.
Not like that.
Not like that.
Not like that.
But it's certainly not at, at market value, no matter what.
Well, no, but I mean, you also had a Democrat in. That didn't help matters any. When, when did, when did prices start going crazy? Actually, I, I will take some of that back. Bush had, had a little bit to do with the two. I will say that. But I mean, it.
I've always been here since fifteen in this position. But I know what the values of them is there. And it's crazy. But that's homes. But the homes are starting, but the homes are moderating a little bit now.
I'm just glad you're not using Zillow dot com to assess my house. Have you seen how I already Zillow this?
Oh, yeah.
Realtor dot com has me at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Zillow has me at four hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Wow.
Where are they getting those numbers from?
Would you sell it for four point seven?
If somebody came up to me with that kinda money, I might be inclined to sell.
This is, uh, an abstract of fees that recorder beats collected. So every month she brings a report and shows you, uh, where she, where she is.
Oh, yeah. They do that in Colorado already and it's assessed differently. Yeah, it's, you know, it's subdivision right against the farm. It's got five hundred thousand dollars houses in it. They don't allow that to up the value, but as long as it's used for.
That's what we're gonna do out here at, uh, Old Country Club, El Camino and all that, if you're there. That was the very, that was when I first started and I thought, you know, all this is commercial land. They have it subdivided. They have it plotted. They have it platted. They have it, they have power and electric and all that stuff. All of these ad sites. And I said, well, that's commercial.
And they're selling it at commercial prices.
They're selling it by the square foot, yes. So, they said, no, 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 no. We still bail hay off of that. That is an ag related deal. Sure enough, they were correct. So I couldn't list it as commercial. I had to list it as ag.
Did you list mine as commercial? Cause I bail hay off, hay off of mine.
No, but I'm, I'm like.
Mm-hmm.
That's probably not gonna work.
I'm gonna figure.
Well, but anyway.
You wanna take care of these cats?
Huh? Yep. Ready.
You got your weather stuff? You got your weather stuff?
Oh, yeah. Alright. So, uh, Court Thomas Act. Mark, and I think you requested for the twenty-fifth of January, what the weather conditions were like that day. So, uh, it was a, it was a nice day here. It was forty-six was the high. Twenty-one was the low. We did have, uh, ten fifty mile per hour winds. I do have the hour by hour forecast that's on here, if you wanna compare it to when they took it. Uh, now soil temperatures. Now, on the twenty-fifth, it showed the average soil temperature at twenty-nine degrees. And that is from a zero to ten centimeter depth. That's about, uh, a little under four inches.
I don't know what's going on.
Oh, I don't either.
These are lot temperatures at the time of.
So, when they, when they, when they D and R came out, the, the last thing they just said, they took those soil samples on December, or I'm sorry, January the twenty-fifth.
Gotcha, okay.
And I wanted to know what the temperature was and basically the soil temperature when they took those samples. Because it, I have heard that you cannot take samples, especially core samples, in that temperature or you get a mixed reading.
So.
January what day?
Twenty, twenty-fifth.
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 So the average temperature, of course, from the surface down to about four inches was twenty-nine degrees on that day.
Okay.
Um, but here is all the information you can keep.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a twenty-nine degrees?
Twenty-nine. From the surface to four inch.
It's always five seven, what I'm gonna do. Always good to have somebody to warn when there's a drought or a flood. It's the weatherman. It's always his fault. Except on the second.
Let's see this.
How are you?
Good, and you?
I'm always good. I saved a seat for you.
Well, thank you. You're just a guy I wanted to see.
Uh-oh.
He tried hiding and he found him anyways.
I was. How's every day? And he never, he never comes out and says anything.
About two, I would wave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doing what?
Oh, I do a lot of carving and I go camping and fishing and hunting and woodworking projects. Yeah, I try to stay busy. No motions medicine. When you get home.
You got a pen and paper? I got a name and phone number I'm gonna tell you. And then I'll explain it here in a minute. Carson, C A R S O N. Last name is, oh, Cole, I don't know, C O L L E T I E R.
What? Cole, Cole Tier.
C O L L E T I E R. Cole Tier.
Cole Tier, yeah, something.
Phone number nine one three, five five one, seven two three four.
Seven three two four.
Seven two three four. He's our EPA compliance officer. Who's working Henry County now.
Do they change?
They, uh, we had a Zoom meeting with EPA yesterday. About one thirty.
He's EPA?
Yep.
C O L L T I E R.
C O L L E T I E R.
What's his first name?
Cole, our Carson, C A R S O N.
See, I can't search him.
Yes. They're all work from home. I think that, she said they're gonna change that then.
For now.
Yeah, like next week, they're all going back to the office. So, that's our EPA contact compliance officer. They talked over a few things with us. They said they've gotten, we're on the top of their list now because they've received so many phone calls from the public. So, so they're making it a priority now. What's the, the main thing they said is they were like at a tier three testing. But they, they, they moved them up to a tier four where they have to test for the heavy metals. The tier three, they don't test for heavy metals and stuff. So now they are gonna start testing for heavy metals. The EPA is gonna make average. They, they, they self-test and they were only at a tier three and they, they don't have to do as detailed testing, but now they do. Other than that, he said, if you have any questions, concerns, if they can help in any way, that's his cell number. They'll do anything, um, anything we, we ask, so. I want to pass that name and phone number on to you.
Did he give you a card?
No, we were on Zoom.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
So I do have his email address. Um, I'll let you write it down after a little bit.
Wherever you. Put it in my contacts.
And I guess you all seen, D and R's report came out yesterday. Everything looks good except for arsenic. Other than that, everything was great. For D and R.
EPA didn't say they were piggybacking off of D and R's report whenever they should have to get it. That was yesterday. That's before we do, it came out, so.
Do you know where they tested? Did they test in the same place?
All I know is they tested five spots at the school.
Five ponds at.
Five spots at the school.
At school.
I, I don't know what's, what points it has.
Okay. Are you officially moved in now downstairs?
Oh, we can talk, but no. So.
One thing I wanna bring out, I'm telling, uh, Doc Scott come by the day and that building down there, they're not, they gotta, it's turned from twenty-five thousand to do, redo the building and put everything in. It's sixty thousand dollars now. And he said, he's gotta wait till the board meets. And then they'll go ahead and proceed, but he wanted the board's okay. Well, that's gonna put, getting out of there about May, by the time he gets everything switched over. So he wanted to let us know, don't be a shit electricity all till we get that all done. And he said, I said, well, they may wanna do some work for it. I don't know the people. He said, well, we can work that out. We'll just keep it locked. Lock the door inside and that'll be it. The main thing is that what Chris is in there because.
Yeah, Darren. Darren's gonna have his guys from the, the, uh, Ford and bike price. They're gonna be there Saturday morning at eight o'clock. We got from eight to noon. There's gonna be nine guys to move everything over. We're gonna start moving some of the bike doors and the paperwork and stuff over. We can do that ourselves. But the rest is part of the big stuff. Nine guys on Saturday morning.
Okay. What else do we have to do?
It's a big price increase.
Uh, well, that hatch, plus the wiring and getting everything moved over, all the equipment. And there's gotta come alley there, go into the new one.
That's a lot.
And that's, that's what I said. I couldn't believe it. They said it's gonna cost sixty grand to get it. They just had a bid.
Where are you putting all those files? Where are you putting all those files?
Out in New York.
That are.
Upstairs?
Yeah.
That's up to.
Yeah, we gotta find a location.
Yeah.
I mean, there's.
Now, they'll be having them come in and do much stuff in there.
We're not having them do it. That's how you are.
Don't do that, cause they don't need to keep getting there right now.
There's files in the basement too.
Yeah.
Cause, yeah, that's right.
There's all that stuff and that's, a lot of it's pretty highly.
Soaking wet.
Confidential stuff, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it is wet.
Sure don't need that to get out in the public.
There's a lot of it wet.
It shouldn't have.
Is all been scanned wet, so we can go.
In the basement or?
Yeah, yeah. We went down, it was wet.
We don't have keys to any of that stuff, so. We can get, we don't have access to that anyway, so.
Okay. Anyway, I'm gonna let you know that.
The why?
So, we talked to them. We need to let them know.
Well, it comes from the root.
It's gonna be probably back me. We can't help it. Can't, we're the ones that kinda.
Got it.
And then last week, we rolled out Everbridge. The first day we rolled it out, we got this in our first alert, so.
Worked well.
Yeah.
Couple feedback on them.
Yeah. C Highway, that's semi truck they rode over.
Yeah.
So, we set up a geofence around it and if you go inside that area, it sends an alert to your phone business.
Now, did we have something come up on the phone? I was able to ask you about that. To join that, to that, or is it automatically just come in on everybody's cell phone?
So, it's set up both ways. If it's a weather related, it's gonna automatically come to your cell phone.
Okay.
If you wanna set it up for other alerts, like the traffic alerts and stuff like that, you have to go in and you click buttons.
Okay. I need to do that, cause I seen that. I, I thought that's what it was, but I wanna talk to y'all.
So, as far as weather though, no, but everybody's gonna get that.
And anytime you go inside that geofence, you're gonna get it, if you're signed up for the traffic. Oh, if you're signed up for the traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, so people, people driving down, we had to circle right at the seven and C Highway. So, if you're driving down, you're getting ready to take a left to get on C Highway, as soon as you pass that geofence, you'll get an alert, just like an Amber Alert on your phone. That says C Highway is closed two point two miles ahead or whatever the case may be. So, you know, that's, uh, that's, that's gonna be incredible.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
It'll be good.
So, it's not like a one time alert that you send out. It's when you enter that area and you.
For that one?
Yeah, for the, for the.
For that one, it's gotta have a blocking down.
We can, we can leave it off. We can select if we wanna leave it off for twenty four hours and however long we wanna leave it on for, and then whenever dispatch let us know it's clear, we go in and clear it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome.
You know, yeah?
Nothing, no, it's the door that.
Yeah.
You got anything you wanna?
You have anything else?
I don't have nothing.
Yes.
I'm just sitting here watching today.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark, I got called last night. Don't know if you got the message.
I actually, I saw it this morning.
That, uh, after the meeting, I'd like for you to come by the shed. I would like to take you for a short ride.
Mm hmm.
Uh. We got phone call yesterday, uh, Fields Creek, had to drop everything we had could do, was doing, so we could, we had to start bleeding our roads with our box bleed. Uh, looks like somebody went up there and just bombed it. I mean, it's just bad. And, um, anyway.
Asphalted water street.
Now, the, the dozen here, he wanted to start just past Brad Smart's house and, uh, take it all the way to five hundred, but. He says the rest of these roads are in pretty decent shape. My mobile show Mark the Road that he says is in pretty decent shape. See what he thinks about it. Um, otherwise, bridge inspection started yesterday. Um. They're gonna continue on this week, then they're gonna take next week off and then come back the next week and finish up the east side of the county. Um. Otherwise, they're doing their training on the mower racks today for the new mower. Uh, they'll be done probably about noon. So, after they get done with their training, I'm gonna have them go out and start bleeding on some more roads in Fields Creek. So.
They're gonna try the mower out too today?
Not today.
Alright, when are they gonna be back for that?
Probably tomorrow.
Okay.
And when they take it out, try it out, I'll go out and take the video and send it to you guys.
I'd like to see that.
Uh, so you guys can see how it works. So.
What are you bleeding with?
Do what?
So what are you doing the bleeding with? You don't have a blade?
We had to, uh, drop the brush. I was off the tractor, hook up the box bleed.
Oh, that's.
That ain't working with it anyway.
That ain't working too good, I wouldn't think.
No.
I did too.
Aren't you sorry?
So, anyway, we're doing what we can to smooth up the roots the best we can. Um. There was something that entered my mind while we was talking, but it left as fast as.
Good, hell, I've got blades.
Mark, you guys, and?
This, I guess, is for all of us. What's, what? What's it gonna take? For us to be able to get a road grader?
You gotta put it out for bids.
Well, I.
And you're gonna have to find, you're gonna have to find about two hundred to three hundred dollars.
See, that, that was my question. Have we got any money set aside anywhere that is for something of that nature and, I mean, I. I know they're like pricey, but I mean, is there any purple wave, any pla- I mean, cause you, you, I know you don't wanna buy somebody else's problems and then fix them. But is there anywhere, any place that you know of that we would be able to like start looking for?
You can go to, um, John Deere, Cat, Saney, uh, they're all, and just tell them, okay, we're looking for. A machine that slow wires and something that's fairly relative newer. Uh, what do you have? And they're gonna give you a list of, uh, several items. I mean, that's what I've done, just to kinda get a ballpark figure. Um. Cat run about, runs about a hundred thousand dollars higher than John Deere.
Mm hmm.
Um. And then John Deere, you know, depends what, depend where you have, what brand you wanna go with or whatever, or what your specs write, you write. Uh, Saney, you know, they, it's a new company. Um, it's a cheap version or whatever, and it comes out of South Korea. Um, parts are relative, uh. Redly and available, uh, pricing on them after the tariffs and stuff, who knows? Um, so I'd stick with something that, uh, you can get with a reliable, uh, service with.
Nope. Do you, cause I, I don't know how the commission works on this. I know like when we got one at Windsor, uh, like when we bought a truck. We signed for it and went through Hawthorne, got a loan, just made payments on it. Do, does the commission pay the whole thing off at once or?
I would suggest.
We will pay it all off if we're gonna buy it. Uh, the worst thing some of these do it, they get into it, they'll, they'll lease it, buy it to lease.
Mm hmm.
Well, before the lease is out, something comes up.
Something's gonna go wrong, right.
Well, we gotta have to, well, don't worry. Well, they take what's left, add it to a new one and keep going and they can get in way over their head.
Well, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lease anything, but, but my question is, can you get a bank to give you a note?
It's just the compliance issues that we have to do as it's classified as county debt.
That's right.
Okay, that, that was my question because, I mean, if you're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, when is the county gonna come up with three hundred thousand?
I think I should just write out a check.
What I recommend.
Jim Mike.
I think we should visit with our townships that may be struggling making those payments.
I would wait to the April meeting and.
They may be, somebody wants to do something.
Take over their, their loan.
Yeah.
Which may not be. But a few payments from being paid off.
Yeah.
And.
Have a good.
We're gonna, like, we'll maintain your township for so many hours a month, you allow us to take over the payments on this thing or something.
Cause there, there's some road graders in some of these townships. Uh, I agree, but it's, they aren't taking care of it. The thing is, you better work with them, try to first. That's, and that needs to be done. Because just like they're, yeah, if we had to, we could, we, but we saved their money back years ago. We couldn't even buy a four wheeler tractor.
Right.
But we saved their money and then the next year, then we bought one and we paid for it. And that way you don't, you're not getting enters. Then you just try to build that away and just like right now, we could probably do it, but we wanna make sure we work with the townships too. They need to know what we're doing.
Yes, I, I personally, I would.
I mean, you want clarity, that's what you need to do and we'll bring it up at the township meeting and see what all of us say. After we make something work, that's what it's gotta be, yeah, it should be.
Yeah, I. I would not, I mean, even if we had three hundred thousand dollars in the bank, I would not spend it on a road grader. Because anybody that spends their own money, when they're in business, when they have access to using somebody else's, that does not make sense to me. The county's always gonna get their, their taxes are gonna come in. If, unless everything goes to hell in a handbasket. Your money's always gonna come in year after year after year. There may be a little bit of a difference. So, if, if it seems to be like you go to a bank and you get a loan on it, now you have to put some kind of money down so you don't have crazy outrageous payments. Cause that's how we did it when we, when we bought the, uh, the truck. But at least that way, you're running, I mean, every business runs on somebody else's money. You don't run on your own. That's just good sense.
Pardon? Hold on just a second. Uh, what'd you say now, man? I'm sorry. I had to turn the phone.
I think the county townships have more.
I'll tell you what, let me, let me, uh, have you talk to Mark and see what I work on. Somebody talked to you last week.
Talked to me last night?
Last week.
Hello?
On an interview.
Oh, pretty good. How are you? Uh, how about if I give you a call back here in a little bit? We're actually right in the middle of something. Alright. Yeah, please, please. Uh huh. Okay. And what was your name again? Okay, yep, I will do that. Uh huh, thank you.
So, I think there are more road graders out there in the county than are operators right now.
Really?
Cause they're having a hard time finding somebody that can.
They're wrong.
And we, you may have one operator that works for.
Three, three.
So, you think that they'd be willing to sell theirs?
There might be somebody out there interested in that.
Or, or would we just use theirs?
It depends what kind of deal you structure with them.
Townships are a little different. I mean, you gotta get.
I mean, if you, if. If you didn't have to buy one. So, you're either gonna spend close to three hundred thousand dollars or you're gonna cut a deal with the township to use theirs. You, you got a lot of, you got a little wiggle room there for labor hours or, or whatever. I mean, that actually would be a great idea if they would be willing to do it.
You tell them that we'll maintain your roads for.
So many hours?
So many hours a month for so many years and then we.
That, that, I mean, that is, that would be a great idea if, if they'd go for it.
You might have one that's thinking about one that way.
But what, let me ask you, so that would, that would solve their problem. What about the other townships? Because where we drove, there's more than one that have issues. So, so you'd almost have to cut deals with two or three of them.
Well, if the deal is, let's say you cut a deal with, and I'm just gonna throw this out there. Let's say I, we cut a deal with Davis Township, take over their motor grader, we're gonna give them thirty hours a month of blade.
Hey, what?
And, uh, for five years.
Hold on just a second.
I'm just using this for example. And in the meantime, if I need to use that motor grader somewhere else in a different township, then that's fine. I get to use it. But I get to charge that township and that money comes to the county. It don't go to.
Have we got the kick? We'll need to haul it?
Yeah, I got a low boy.
You got something to haul?
But when you're talking two miles out of town, they're gonna send a hauler.
No, no, no.
I mean, especially when they run thirty mile an hour.
Well, the county is.
So, you'd keep it, it.
You'd keep it at Henry County.
Okay, that's what I, that, yeah, okay.
You'd keep it in Henry County and then it's, let's say. Deepwater Township needs their roads loaded on the low boy, haul it down to Mark Rose, blade the roads, bring it back on the low boy and be done.
Yeah, that, that makes, I thought you meant calling it from all the way down where that township, Davis was clear up someplace.
No, it would be, it would become, with the agreement that you work out with Davis Township, it would become a motor grader that belongs to the county. But you're just bleeding their roads for X amount of, uh, hours each month for so many years.
That actually generally would be, actually would be a good idea.
I would wait after your, your meeting over here with all the townships and see where, where they're at. Because, uh, I heard through the grapevine that, uh, Deepwater and Bear Creek was gonna go together and buy a motor grader to share. So, I mean, I don't, you know, you might not have the. The need for a motor grader if the townships maintain their roads properly.
Next question would be, have you got the manpower to do that?
Eventually, I wanna have to hire, I'm short a guy now, and I was gonna wait till spring and hire a person. But what you do is wait till spring and you, you advertise for, uh. Somebody to operate a motor grader, then you interview them and make sure they know what a motor grader even looks like.
Right, right. Okay. Yep.
I mean, them are just budgets that you're gonna have to work out as you go through, cause I looked at them, uh. I hear where the solar farms are, we're thinking about one. Um, they hauled in some equipment up there to start putting in some roads to where they need to get access to. And they had a Saney motor grader. Uh, so I just stopped and looked at it and. It's got joysticks that you operate everything with. I grew up on a motor grader that you had these sticks up here and you alternated, you know, and ran with your fingers and, and bladed the roads that way and stuff. But, uh, these joysticks, I'm not a game player.
I think John Deere's coming out with one.
John Deere's is, is that way.
Yeah, a lot of the newer ones.
You operate the mower board and everything, the steering and everything off these joysticks.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't even have a steering wheel on them.
No. Just like driving a little tractor or something else.
I mean, you're getting in a spaceship, driving it down the road now.
That's your old time guys versus your new.
So, I mean, you gotta.
Wheel on ours.
You gotta, you gotta make sure that you.
You gotta get the right person.
Interview somebody that knows what they're doing.
What they're doing, sure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's nothing that, uh, I think we need to jump heads over heels and jump into feet first. And start doing today or something like that. I think it's something we need to, uh, research and.
Talk about.
I think it's something that needs to be done, but it's something we need to work towards, not just jump in.
Cause the next thing is do, we do a township form a government, which we, we're not ready for that.
No, no.
But these roads, you know, when, when, that I'm gonna take you out and show you, you know, you're gonna have to have the ability to call that township and say, you got a day to get this thing fixed. Or I'm gonna send the guys out there. We're gonna do it and we're gonna hold your money. Because until you guys start holding these townships. To their feet, they're gonna get by with what they want.
Trust me, I, I mean, after our first trip, I, I told you, I've, I've got no problem at all. I mean, it's, it's, the, half the problem is most of these townships. Don't understand that they are actually a government entity. And they need to act like that.
I mean.
My, this is my buddy, so I'm gonna do his road. Or we'll get to this when we get to it. I mean, it, you, there's, there's accountability and responsibility. And it starts at the top and goes all the way to the bottom. It doesn't matter who you are. And as far as I'm, I mean, like making a phone call, I got thick skin. I don't care. My, my, my issue is get it done because I don't wanna take the phone calls that I've already gotten.
I mean, I'm getting phone calls daily about car parts falling off, struts getting broken, rims are dented and. And all I can do is refer them back to the township. And when township gets their phone call. Sorry, that's just the pay price you live, pay of living in the country.
Well, but it, actually it's not. If that's the case, we shouldn't be paying taxes.
So.
So.
I mean, that's just. Where we're at. Uh. Did you have anything else?
No, no. I, I didn't see, like I said, I didn't see your phone call till this morning. I looked like I tried calling you back.
No, no, he doesn't, he doesn't answer me.
I heard it for the first time either. You go.
Jim, you got anything? Rick, you got anything?
I've got something.
I would like to, uh. Start thinking about, uh, putting the tractor bid out. It was built in my budget to buy a tractor this year. That way, we get it out and get mowing with it from the beginning instead of doing it at the end of the year and having to recall things and. So, I mean, we're gonna start mowing here in a few months. And I'd just like to go ahead and get something, um, ironed out rather it's. Start getting the specs typed up and get them approved by you guys before we. Put them in the paper and everything, uh, because it takes a couple of weeks to get that done because. You have to call a couple of different people and get different tractor sizes and stuff. And then you gotta kind of make a generic, uh, spec sheet for them so they know what to bid.
You don't know a four without a bigger tractor.
Yep.
That's what you gotta have.
Sixty one thirty, sixty one thirty or sixty one thirty five R. And it's gonna be a front wheel assist, four wheel drive.
Get your, get your better tractor, don't get that lower end tractor.
No, that's the R series. So, I mean, I just, I just need the permission to go ahead and start pushing forward with that.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Let's go ahead and see what we got.
Okay. Yeah, Ross D.
Are you headed that way today? I'll give them a call right now. Where you go, what route are you heading to?
Um, last week you guys, um, agreed to do the petition for that sewer district. And I never got Jim to sign for it. This is, um, your letter.
Hmm.
Retyped. Changed, changed it just a little bit. I think I added the names of the counties that you want to send it to. I looked on the map of all, everybody that's, has Truman Lake in it. That included Hickory Counties. I'll get ahold of Jake.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
I forgot about the comment. Can we change my budget a little bit?
Nope. I just got in. Scott, does that blend in together?
Huh?
Does that blend in together?
We don't have to necessarily change my budget. I've got plenty of money. I just need a new line item in my budget. Does that make sense to do it that way? Do they have to approve it?
A little line on it. Move it around.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and start getting the specs together and the tractor. And anyway, uh, bridge inspectors are screwing with my schedule. And so I had to step out and make some calls to Mike Briggs because he wants to be there when we inspect his bridges. Did you guys have anything?
No, no.
Yeah.
Rick?
Yeah.
I'm outta here.
Bye.
Before somebody else calls me.
Oh, but they call you. Could you do your box blade and your stuff in my driveway?
Nope.
Oh.
You call the state.
Stop, man, they rip me right in front of the lake that much to get up.
Dennis? Really, if a road gets, if he needs it, I've got a good blade, John Neer blade, that works good on both. If they wanna use it, I mean, put it on the trailer and bring it in.
Well, I'm running a box blade, uh, today and tomorrow during, unless it rains and. Try to get them dressed up the best I can, but.
If you do, this one swings around and. It's a lot easier. Blade nine eleven box blade works too, but it don't work as good.
No, cause as bad as these roads are right now, it's just that back there.
Right.
So, have a good day, Scott.
I'll see you. Okay. Yes, sir. What was your name?
Jesse Phillips.
Jesse Phillips, okay. Did you want to speak to us today?
Yes.
Jesse, okay.
You're in the spotlight. The four jurors.
Yeah, we have, you got anything else?
I do have.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Jesse.
I wanted to know where Henry County was on the, uh, real estate property freeze for senior citizens. For Governor Parsons legislation.
Seven one ninety.
Yeah, or it was six. Yeah, seven fifty six and a half. It's changed. Anyway, we haven't done anything yet on it. We're trying to get everything lined out or figure out what to do. There are just a lot of issues. It really, right now, the way it stands, we only. Bay or freeze, uh, the tax levy and senior se, senior citizens. That's it. Because that's only two levies that we got control of. If we do everybody's, that freezes everything. The townships and everything else. And that, we really don't have the authority to do. That's the problem.
So what's the probability of it happening in Henry County then?
Well, if we'd done it a few years ago, it. Stayed the same, went there or went down a little bit. It just went up a tenth of a cent. Really, it didn't matter that much to, it didn't help seniors that much, most of them. Most of them. Uh, Bruce is, Bruce has done a lot. He was always a senior, senior senator. He can probably give you inform, more information, more accurate, cause there's some other avenues I've been trying to do. That would help seniors out more. Bruce can go ahead and fill him in.
Well, he wanted to know what the status was.
Yeah. We're not anywhere yet.
You gave him that. I don't know what his expectations are about that bill personally. May not be, it may or may not be terribly advantageous. It depends on your specific situation. Uh, this is my, I did my own tax here. It's kind of small. Let's see there. If they only do. Henry County and the senior tax board freezes. If I had elected to take the freeze in twenty twenty three, I would have been, my taxes actually went down in twenty twenty four. So it wouldn't have been a good idea if they freeze it. In twenty twenty five, it would go down to that level.
Give it another year, it'll drop.
I would have been screwed that one year. So, but as you can see, it's only on, is, I would have saved like forty cents.
That's where we're at, with our size. Class three counties are a little different than a larger county.
There's some debate as to what taxes they can freeze. You know, these are all the levies here. And the Senate bill, it's actually seven fifty six now. My interpretation of it is, is that they can freeze the whole thing. But even so, as you can see, even if they did that. They, uh, it made no difference for me whatsoever. You know, in those two years.
So that's, that's where we're at, but we're kind of up in the air and we really haven't decided. If they can ever come up with something that'll work. I think all the commissioners, but that's, we'll have to decide that as a go of all.
Yeah, he and I just agree on how many levies they can freeze.
Yeah. Just like us, I go to the state statutes, what we can, can't. Now, some of the counties, if you do it, you can, but, uh, you're opening yourself up to a lawsuit again, too. That's the reason.
And how many, how many counties have passed that legislation for the senior, you guys?
Rick, uh. I think more than more are, but I don't know the number. Pettis did, Cast.
Cast did, Jackson.
Johnson. Who around us.
Uh.
Uh, Benton.
Benton, Benton did.
I'm not sure about St.
St. Clair, yeah, Bates hasn't. Bates is, they're talking about it. Uh, Bates, cause some of them, just like Cass, Johnson, Pettis, larger, larger counties. I thought Johnson, they did?
If you can give me a couple of weeks, I've got a phone call in to the guy that wrote it. I'm actually waiting for him to get back with me. Because that way he can explain to me, cause I, I understand what these guys, I understand what they're saying. I'm just not understanding how the state can pass a law and say that you can do this. And then we do it and they say we can get sued. So I'm gonna get some clarification from him because I'm with you. The seven fifty six, actually, the reason that was even written. Was to eliminate all the issues that were in the one ninety. Where people were trying to, well, we're gonna freeze this, but we're not gonna freeze this, we're gonna freeze this, and we're not gonna freeze this. Seven fifty six was written to freeze everything, all of it. Not just the senior senator or, or this or that. It's the whole shooting match. So if that would open us up to a lawsuit, then I'm, I'm with Jim. I mean, I think it'd be a bad idea. I do. But I'm not sure it does. So for me, I'm gonna go to the horse's mouth. They wrote it, let them figure it out. And if they tell me, no, they, they, they can't, the school can't sue you, nobody else can sue you. Then, then I will bring it back and, and tell them. And if need be, I'll get him to come here and explain it.
We don't have any problem with doing that. I just had problems going in. I know just opened myself up for a lawsuit. That's the whole reason. If it, if this is true and it works, like I said, he knows the guy that wrote it. If he can give us, say, hey, I guarantee you're not gonna have to worry about getting my lawsuit again, I think it's great. Cause I'm, believe me, I fall in that category. And I think all of yours. Not gonna bother me a bit.
There you go.
And everybody, all the commissioners that I talk to, most of them fall in that category and do that.
How long have you been in that category?
I just got there. Several years ago. I'm not that long down the road, but I am all in, just like here.
Well, yeah, cause if you get sued, you don't wanna do it.
I just don't wanna do something that causes a county to cost a bubble of money besides setting it up and then turn around and.
That's, that's, the kicker is gonna be the IT side. That's gonna, I mean, any way you look at it, that's gonna cost.
And this business of, just like here, that needs to come down from the governor's office. Says, hey, you're a super agent, we'll be done. That's, that's where, he should put that in there, but say, no county.
Well, they, yeah, they. They need to get it a little more defended. And then, then with that way.
And believe me, they won't have any trouble with me passing it. I'm all in for it.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Can't be against something that I know can open myself up for lawsuits and it will change. And it may not be now, but just like all these townships, all the way to raise their levy.
Freeze level it was at will go up.
Or raise it, but it's still gonna be on everybody that's, you know, sixty five and.
We freeze it.
Sixty two and now, the average, uh, in the county ages.
But anyway, and then I pass away, is there a sudden catch up?
Yes.
To the, to the.
Yep.
And who, who takes care of that?
Not me.
It's, it's not a catch up, it's a, uh, reevaluation.
Yeah, it goes, it goes right back.
Original, that's.
Unless somebody buys it that is sixty two.
Or above. If they're sixty two, or sixty two just.
Yeah.
And I don't know for sure because it's neither primary residence. That's, the next, yeah, yeah. It's not just land.
Right, right.
Just the residence. That's, you know, there's a lot of just, when you look at just a house, so. Now, it's gotta mean the whole house, major factors.
It, it probably, over the course of the next ten years, yes, it's true. Over the course of between this year and next year, probably not, I mean, you're not gonna know, it's not, it's very negligible, but. If it's a penny. I mean, and I don't, I don't know your situation. Do you already do the property tax credit?
No, I don't, I'm not qualified for that.
Okay, I just, I don't know everybody's situation, but if you, if you, if you haven't, everybody needs to do that.
Yeah, I, I wish I was qualified, but I'm not.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
No, you know, you would like. You would be broke.
Well, that's true, yeah.
You don't wanna be in that situation.
You'd be very worried about meals and saving taxes.
Yeah, cause the bottom right hand corner of their sliding scale chart is all zeroed out. I qualify to file, but I don't get anything. They're trying to remedy that problem also.
That's really, I think, that would be the much better answer, is raise that, that level so that more people qualify for that program.
Well, that's, that's House Bill twenty fifty.
Look, I. That will never pass because the state would be on the hook for the money.
Yep.
They don't care about the slumming these out. They're trying to survive.
That's the problem.
And so if it did pass, would you be eligible for, well, the freeze and.
Someone's paying the.
State.
Paying the.
Tax refund.
I think.
It doesn't come out of the schools or any of that.
It depends on where you stand. There're just so many questions about it. There's where you get into it. And there's, let's face it, this attorney's world.
What you need to do is you need to lobby with your. What you need to do is you need to lobby with your congressman to have them the last original, or the last purchase price of the property is the value of its assets and stays there until something changes, like you sell it, sell it higher now.
I have some stuff for you guys. I have some stuff for you guys.
Mark, I brought in some bid specs. Mark, I reworked it. Um, this statute that you cited is for the executive branch, is on the five commissioners. But I did find one that does.
Good, good.
So, um, this is what I changed on your letter. This is the meat of the bid specs. How many samples you want, where you want them, how quick you want them, the price. I just need you guys to decide what you want that to be. I just randomly pick some things.
No, no, that's good, that's good.
But this is, um.
I, I don't know, if California liked it and passed it, I'm pretty sure I don't like it. That's just me.
That caused a lot of consternation, let me tell you.
That is, that is what you require them to do. So you guys need to decide how many, what's the minimum number of samples you want? Where do you want them taken from? How soon you want it back?
I mean, it's, it's very individual from, all you have to do is go, get your architect statements out for the last few years. Uh, whether you just do the senior tax and the county, you can look at those numbers, or you can just go to the bottom and see what you're looking at. That's, and see if the freeze would benefit you or not.
This looks good, Rick.
Well, that gets you, um.
That covers pretty good.
Half a mile out to three or four miles out.
Right, yeah.
And it's all on public property. It's the digits. So they wouldn't have to worry about getting permission to test somebody's property.
It's not the, uh, whatever.
Okay, how do you think it's going to?
Please, I'm gonna retest the region.
We got one, two, three, four.
Some of these actually are some of the.
Just so we can compare the regions.
Huh? Well, the.
That is, we specify the specs wherever you want those tests taken. And if you're doing it on personal property, you need to get permission.
Yeah, then we have to get permission.
I don't think you're gonna have an issue getting that.
I don't think so either, but you still have to go through the paperwork, get it signed off.
Right.
Like we do on working our road. Which just adds another spot to it.
It'd be nice, since you already have one set from there, the other second set from the same spot, so you can compare those two.
We don't know all the spots, the exact location.
Yeah.
We have the type.
We got, and I can get all of them, but we've got, I don't know how many were in that.
I got it. I got the spots, yes. But I said, I don't know, I know we talked about that before.
I think it'd be a good idea. I mean, I think it. The, uh, I actually found somebody, Jim, but I'd rather talk about this when we're not being recorded. Because I don't think anybody needs to know other than who we're using. That's why I didn't, I didn't, I, I don't want there to be any of everybody out there knowing this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing it. Because then you open up the door for someone to say, I mean, since Evergy said they're gonna pay for it. I don't want somebody to say, well, Evergy's gonna pay for it, but Evergy, you know, since they're paying for it, they may have had contact with the people that are doing it.
Once you sign the contract, but that's public record.
Yeah.
Can't conceal that.
Yeah, once we sign the contract, we're done. It opens it up. Because we'll.
Can we, let me ask you, can we have the testing done? Because the way I've discussed it with him is he would pay the county. And we would pay.
Yeah.
The people.
That's right. That's what we all agree. That's, yeah.
So.
That don't stop fact to where we stand when we sign a contract. It's gotta be public record. Then, once, once we sign the contract, it's open. I agree, you can go in closed session if you're gonna do a contract signing with that company. But you have to, you have to be very capable, just like us, when, when we sign it, really, it's public, open. As soon as we sign the contract.
Concealed for, you know, there's a time period that closed record is closed.
Yeah, then they can be opened up. That's, that's where we're at. It's kind of like what you said about talkers. You can talk, that don't necessarily mean.
So how long, how long before they're, they're made public?
I think it's three days.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I think that's what it is.
Well, it's three days for disciplinary actions. Um, if, if that's the reason you're going in closed session, is, is, if the contract is signed and negotiations are done, I, I, there may not be a, a waiting period. I'd have to do some.
See, that's, that's, I mean, honestly, that's, and I don't, I personally, I don't think they're gonna sneak out there and try, you know what I'm saying? But I don't, I don't want to open the door up for anybody to say, we're with Evergy. And that, that's, 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 I'm, I'm just telling you from what I'm seeing.
Come out in front of this situation, anybody that thinks that is, you're not gonna be able to change it anyway.
Well, and that, I, I will agree with that.
I mean, to me, we've been, if you want to be open about it, just like you're, I, to me, I'm, I'm open with it. It's kind of like the other, I mean, still yet, uh, somebody, they go after anybody that goes out there. And if they're picking that place, everybody's got me on the same page. And I, just like here, if we go to, if we go to, if we use their, every spot they got, then we're letting them guideline or exact. But that's a different case.
I didn't know if you knew it or not, that paperwork that you gave me of that one company.
Oh, yeah.
They're actually, they're one of the three that we had talked about.
Oh, okay.
But they're also the one that did Bill Stewart's.
Okay.
So that was it. I mean, I, that, because I was thinking, that'd be perfect, but we don't want to use the same one that he used. So I'm gonna say the first, the first one on the list that you and I looked at, that's who I would, because I called the other one, and they, they, they just don't seem like they're that type of testing, like the other two.
Now, uh, David, uh, David does.
Kelsey.
Kelsey, he knows several companies that do it. He said he'd be glad to help, help us out on doing that. And I hadn't called him back about it, because he called one evening and just told me, he said, yes, but he used to work at Ken's and Power Light, and he is a chemist. But he said he knew companies that would go in and test for it and do the same, and reputable people to do it. But anyway, I said, okay, but I wanted to wait and talk if we only get some ideas there. Because some of them was over in Lennox and different places closer.
This, this.
This company is, uh.
That one's in St. Louis, I believe. Well, they're actually worldwide.
Yeah.
But that, they've got an office. Uh, Euro. It's the Euro one.
Euro, Euro, Euro. The one I went, the one the water company used, and that's.
That's Intertec.
Yeah.
Intertec, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm.
That's who did the triangle testing?
Yeah, yeah. Try, because I think everybody was thinking the triangle actually did the testing. They didn't. They were the engineering firm that sent it to the testing.
And that's where you're gonna have to be, an engineering firm. That's kind of, David, he, he queued me on that. He said, just like whoever does the testing, you need to have, pick your spot, both people be there, agree on the spot, do the testing and share the same, same soil.
It's just gonna be somebody that has.
Accurate test.
Chain of custody.
That's right.
All the way through.
So anyway, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and it doesn't really matter. I think any of those, when we get into those companies, you're gonna not get, pick and choose. It's kind of, whatever you want, it's hard to say. Because you don't know, kind of like what we're talking about this other, combined, now we're just talking about the same company that done it. So therefore, well, you're all picking the same person that done it before. That's, you gotta want that.
Right, right.
It'd be hard to find a company, because there's so few of them that have not had some kind of business arrangement with Evergy or DNR or UPA.
Yeah.
They, everyone that I looked at, there was literally, I think, two that didn't. That was it. I mean, that was it. And that, that first one on the list that he sent us, they, they have never dealt with them. But they're huge. I mean, huge, huge.
Anyway, as far as the spots, um, I don't care there.
I, 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 I mean, everything, Rick, you've got here, I think, actually is really good. Because I think those are areas that we need, especially the ones at Montrose Lake and the ones on the creek. Because then we're gonna know if it's going downstream. The other ones, I agree with you, it's out on our public, whatever you want, the right of ways, roads and all of that. But I do think it'd be a good idea that we got some, uh, a few, I mean, we don't have to have everyone. But I think it probably would be a good idea to get a few of the personal people, you know? And I'd be willing to bet, especially after this goes out, we'll probably get phone calls, hey, you can come test mine, you know? That we'd already, that has already been tested.
Put it down there and I'll put it in the plant's, uh, page and tell me where you want them sent. I'll get all that done, but.
But we need to have it down where we're willing.
Right, we're gonna say, right, right.
I think it needs to be for, for the company business, and then for the one, so we know how much to go.
Yeah, yeah. Can I, can I get this to you this afternoon? Okay, let me, let me do some research a little bit and talk to people and see what we come up with.
I'd like to get that off, but yes.
I'm glad you found this.
Now, are you talking minimum up here the same as these down here?
You don't need a minimum, I don't know how many.
You got a minimum, and then goes down here, you got one, two, three, four.
Samples. And you're right.
Yeah, I. I would get, I would probably get at least three samples.
Yeah, I.
On the bottom one, and then you're, you're a minimum of, that's how many different places. So if you've got six, you got six minimum, or six random locations. And then if we, say we throw another three of things that have already been already been tested, three or four, that'd get us up to ten.
How many samples from the Davis School?
Oh, I'd get, I'd, I'd get at least three. I'd get one off the roof, I'd get one in the parking lot, and I'd get one in the playground area.
Three, and then a minimum random. Now, that's besides these four?
Four. You got, you got.
Four.
You got actually s- one, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, you've got seven.
Right now.
Right.
And then how many?
You get three from Davis School, that'd be ten. Well, no, it wouldn't be ten.
That'd be seven right now.
Yeah, it'd be eight.
How many, if you want to do two others, I'd, or?
No, it'd be eight. You got one, two, three.
Four and three.
Seven, eight.
I'm counting sixteen.
Oh, you count, you, okay, so if you're.
Six random locations.
You got six up there.
Yeah.
Three that have already been tested.
Right.
And then two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, or one each. Number nine is three from the Davis School, right?
Right.
Three. Nineteen.
Nineteen places?
Well, it would be nineteen places, nineteen samples. Yeah, yeah.
And you got six up here?
Six random.
Yeah.
Three that have already been tested, three samples from somewhere that's already been tested. The lake from Montrose Lake, sediment from the bottom of Montrose Lake. Creek water from Deepwater Creek, at least three hundred yards downstream from the dam. Is that far enough or is that too far?
You know, that's a good que- I don't know if we, we should get it. Right, when it comes out of the dam, or is it dissip-, you know what I'm saying? Because it's gonna dissipate a little bit.
I think it should be a little downstream.
Right, right.
Maybe a hundred yards, fifty yards maybe.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say fifty yards. Quite a ways.
Yeah, I'd say fifty yards. Not us.
Okay, fifty yards?
Yep.
And then one roof, one parking lot, one playground.
Yep, I think.
When do you want this back? When are the bids due?
I wonder if they'd tell you what their earliest is, because I mean, we explained to them it's a rush, because, I mean.
Well, I put on here that your bid must state the time the results of the testing will be completed and sent to the commission. So that's part of that. They'll have to tell us when the results will be done. But we need to know, we need to tell them when we need their bids by.
Bye, bye.
And then the testing, um, Mark, you didn't have hexamethacromium in your paper, so I added it.
Oh, good, good.
Is there anything else that was missed? I just noticed that one was missing, but you had radium lead, arsenic, boron, cobalt, and selenium.
I would actually, that's what you're looking for.
What do you want to copy? Because this has more. You want to copy the same?
All down it?
Is that the same as?
It just has a little bit more.
Does it?
Yeah.
Tell you what, if the same company, we, if they send in a bid and we use them, we've got to be careful not to use them spots. Because the test results should come up the same. I, I assume that, but I don't know that.
Right.
And if you have that company, do it. I'll, I'll come up.
I think we ought to use all the done.
All the ones on that.
Do you have to copy this or you want to make a copy?
Use those stocks, how many is on that?
Well, that is the purpose of the chemicals test.
Yes, yeah, the chemicals, we're already talking about.
So when do you think we need it?
How, how long it takes them to get it, do the test. Because then we gotta get all the people lined up.
Well, this is, we're not worried about how long it takes them to do it yet. We're just waiting on when they have to have a bid to us.
Okay, the bid, bid specs.
And then their bids are gonna say when.
Yeah.
And it may be a determining factor on who you decide.
Yeah.
If, if it says that they'll, it takes them two months to get the results, but somebody else.
Just wait for it.
Then we have contact, ever, two, to make, both of them the same.
Well, they ought, they ought to be able to get us a bid back, I mean, pretty quick, yeah, yeah.
I assume that.
So to, I mean, today's the fourth. I'd give them a week. You get it, you get it out the fifth, yeah. Maybe, yeah, the thirteenth, maybe that way we can have it by the.
Well, then we gotta have it by, uh, be next, next Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
If you can get everything down, big things are getting that out, Tim.
I need to know who, so I'll contact, I'll email them the bid specs.
And you want to try it by the thirteenth? Have it here by the thirteenth?
I think that's.
A week?
Yeah. That's actually a week and a day.
So again, the changes are, you want all fifteen of the chemicals tested. You want six random locations and three that have already been tested. Uh, you want to go fifty yards instead of three hundred. And three samples from Davis School, the roof, parking lot, and playground. Do Thursday the thirteenth. I just need to know who to contact.
Okay.
And that is all I have for you guys.
Now, the, yeah, process.
Whenever we get a date for testing, will you let me know?
Mm-hmm.
EPA and DNR.
Oh, yeah.
And every, they all wanna kinda be there.
Well, they'll.
Yeah, yeah.
DNR, or.
DNR.
Yeah, but they'll all wanna be there.
Can you, can you be there?
Depends when it is. I, I have so much comp time right now, I'm off the rest of the year.
Oh, crap. Hey, there will be, by the way, I, I wanna see where you're going. Remember I asked you?
I haven't been going anywhere.
Okay. Didn't say you're working here.
I've been you.
I think, I think it'd be a good idea, though.
Yes.
You to be there when they do it.
Yeah, I, no doubt about it, but we can, we'll work your schedule out.
Yep.
We can frame on that.
Well, we may have to wake you up, but.
Yeah.
Get you out of the bathroom.
We can, we can manage the problems, the ghosts take care of it.
Has people been involved in this investigation yet, with the strip touching everything right there behind the school?
I, that one I couldn't tell.
I don't know where it will go. Where possible. I don't know, don't know, don't know anything about it, all we know is what we got.
First thing we gotta do is get more testing.
Something else we'd find need to add on here is, um, that Evergy wants to test the same locations at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll have to, they'll need to know that.
Yeah.
They gotta.
Get a test.
Yeah.
They should all be the same, they're probably gonna be different, because daily, it's gonna change.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if it rains, it's gonna change.
It's gonna change, you can't handle it.
Yeah, yeah. And now that they've covered it.
You wanna sample the fly ash tested? The fly ash itself?
That is one thing EPA did say, I'm glad you said that, they asked if there was any sampling, because they can't do genetics to see if those chemicals came from.
That'd probably be a good idea.
I think that, that's what I've always said, you wanna know what's going down on it first.
Mm-hmm.
That'll tell you whether.
Actually, on that call, they asked if we had any samples of the fly ash.
I can get a sample, well, I mean, you're gonna wanna take it from there, but I mean, I can get you a sample of fly ash.
That is one thing that they did ask.
But you need to go up there and test it.
Good call.
I need twenty samples, and that'd be twenty samples.
By nineteen, get one for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think it's a good idea, notice what you're talking about first.
Mm-hmm.
Before you say it's terrible. Okay. Got that.
Just need the name of the companies, and I'll.
Okay.
Get that sent off to them.
Could you bring the doings in?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next time, can you leave them in the back?
Easily accessible and out of view of the camera. We get, you found out that MU could do the testing.
Yeah, but that's just for informational purposes only.
All right. Who can?
MU.
MU.
MU, yeah.
They, they're not going to court or anything.
They won't say it by their tests.
No.
Informational purposes, not if you show, so you can hire somebody else to, or a lawyer or whatever, law firm, if you wanted to do that way.
Does LabCorp do that kinda stuff?
I don't think so. Like you test for heavy metals in your blood?
Oh, see, I knew that, that's why I wondered.
Disquest? That's why I always use when I go to the doctor.
What, the, the hospital uses disquest, and they're actually not doing it, but, because there's been a bunch of people going in there getting, testing for heavy metals, and that they're actually doing it in urine.
Now, the health center, they give tests out for water.
For water.
And stuff, because Saint Clair County, that's where they send everybody down there, the health center.
There's a.
That way they test their wells, cuz.
That's on that paper when you fill it out, because you have to fill it out and send it in, there's this box that says EPA metals, you'll check that box, so that you pick which test you want them to do, and then you mail it in. Just make sure you check the box that says EPA metals. And they won't only test private wells, they won't test rural.
No. Commissioners Office, Jim Stone speaking. Okay, hey, Mark, can I put you on speaker, we're in session today, let me get everything here on speaker, okay? Can you hear me all right? Hello? Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay.
I can.
Okay, I'm Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner, and we're in session, and Mark Lawson, our Northside Commissioners here today, and I got, uh, Rick Watson, our County Clerk. And.
My timing was excellent, I guess.
And what was your name again?
Uh, Matt Kohly.
Matt Kohly.
Yes, K-O-H-L-Y. And I'm with, uh, Socket Telecom. And we are currently a broadband provider in Clinton, and are looking to expand out into the county, um, using a broadband grant application from Department of Economic Development. It's part of the B program that you may have heard of. And, um, as part of that, uh, application, they would like some evidence of local support, and I wanted to see if I could get that support from the commission. And what I would need to do, or what information you would need.
Same thing that you just did with BrightSpeed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think I replied to.
BrightSpeed.
Uh, I had an email from someone yesterday, and I, I requested a map of your proposed area that you're wanting to build out in.
Okay.
I think that's why I.
Yeah.
And, um, one thing to, uh, make sure that the support is not, but it's not limited to just one company. If you see the projects overlap, but you support both of them, or whatever, you can still do that. So it's, I don't know what's, um, I don't say not binding, but, um, is not limited to just one company. But, so you would like to see a map of the project area?
Yeah, that you're wanting to go to.
Statistics of it?
Yeah.
Okay, where should I send that?
Send it to rickw@henrycomo.com.
And what was the first part of that?
Rick.
Rick?
R-I-C.
Okay, Rick Henry?
Rick W. Rick W.
Rick W, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha, I will get that together and get that sent over to you.
Okay.
And have you look at that, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, man.
And if it would be helpful, I could certainly drive over to Clinton and meet with you in person at the courthouse, or however you'd wanna do that.
Yeah.
So I'll send that to you, and let you take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, bye.
Bye. There must be a deadline coming up on that.
Well, there is.
I got an email from another company yesterday about that.
The case center got that, are working, they're having to deal out some money to them.
Harvard, Clinton, and now we're gonna go up in county and tear that up.
That's who I had with BrightSpeed up there, all I can get.
I got BrightSpeed fiber at my house.
Did they get?
I don't know how that happened. That's, I used to work telecommunication, designing the fiber networks for, and somehow it's fiber got designed to my house.
That's weird.
You just had them running it out of my house. Okay.
You guys have anything else?
Yeah, I don't have anything. You, Mark?
Uh, if you give me one second, I may.
Oh.
KCRG. Channel thirteen.
Huh?
You think Casey, where, where they're out of?
Thirteen, that's spring peel.
I'm gonna forward this.
That's spring peel.
Is that who it is?
Yeah.
They're wanting to come and interview the Henry County Commissioners.
Want that in session, or do you guys wanna do a one-on-one with them?
Mark? I would, I would want you to do a one-on-one.
It doesn't matter to me how we do it.
KCRG is at KY three.
Yeah.
Is that who that is?
Yeah, is it, uh, spring peel?
Yeah, spring.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Why you soliciting that down there?
Case, KC TV five is wanting to know where we send, send them the link to the location where your county agendas are published.
On our website?
On, on our website, I'll just tell her that, that'll be simple.
Henrycomo.com.
Yeah.
He's learning how to use that phone.
Huh? I need to check it a little more often.
Hey, now, with, with the new AI stuff, all you gotta do is hit it, and put, let's say, you put it on.
But I gotta know what button to hit, too.
I was messing with this on my computer laptop the other day, and it asked me, do you wanna speak, or do you wanna just automate or write it?
You just need Elon Musk's Neuralink chips planted in your back of your head.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh. Did. We have a lawsuit filed. Did we get a lawsuit filed? Did you get a lawsuit filed?
I've not been served.
I haven't either.
I saw something on KDKD.
I saw that, too, but I've not been served.
Huh?
Yeah, we do that every once in a while. It's amazing what you'll find on there. Yeah, I don't have anything, Jim.
Pardon?
I don't have anything.
Don't entertain a motion, it's done?
I'll make an emotion.
Motion made, and I'll second, adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good.
See you guys in a couple days.